The Salem City Council will hold its regular meeting in person on Thursday, March 9, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers, 93 Washington Street, second floor, for the purpose of discussing any and all business. Notice that this meeting was posted on March 7, 2023, at 9:12 AM, and revised on March 8, 2023, at 4:13 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is live on SATV. Councillors absent, none. Council President Stott presided. Councillor Cohen moved to dispense with the reading of the record of the previous meeting. All those in favor? Matter carries. Will everyone please rise to recite the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councillor Presniewski?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
This evening, we had no members sign up for public testimony. I do have a statement from our city solicitor, though, that I will read into the record. This week, the Supreme Judicial Court issued a decision in the case of Barron versus Kulinda that declared that South Borough, Massachusetts' public participation policy prohibiting rude and discourteous speech and requiring polite discourse at its meetings was unconstitutionally content-based. The court held that what can be required is that the public comment session be conducted in an orderly and peaceable manner, including designate it when public comment shall be allowed in the governmental meeting, the time limits for each person speaking, rules preventing speakers from disrupting others, and removing those speakers if they do. The court concluded that such time, place, and manner restrictions do not violate either the right to assembly or the right to free speech. This decision has implications for the City Council, which, by its rules, Section 26(c), hold public comment periods at regular council meetings. These rules, for example, limit the content of public speech to just those items on the agenda. Based on the South Borough case, however, this and other sections of this rule must be amended to be consistent with this decision. As such, the comment period this evening will not be limited to topics on the agenda, and the city solicitor shall propose an amendment to Council Rule 26(c) for consideration at the council's next meeting. We have no public comment this evening, so still wanted to read that into the record and to give a little preview for a late file that will be coming this evening. Moving on, we have hearings.
Order from National Grid to install one poll on Bridge Street, and this is poll number 2972.
Anyone appearing in favor, please state your name and address for the record.
Sabita Mahaber Sheehy, representing National Grid, 44 River Street, Beverly, Massachusetts. Which poll number did you say?
2972.
Speaker, go to the microphone, so maybe you have to, like, shout.
Yeah, like, yeah. Okay. Okay, this is to install a new poll for communications to monitor the feeders at that location.
Thank you. If there is anyone appearing via or joining us via Zoom this evening that would like to speak in favor, please raise your hand now. Or if you would like to speak in opposition, please use the Zoom Raise Hand function. There's no one else in chambers, so we'll see if there's anyone remotely. No other members of the public wish to speak on this matter? Any comments or questions from the council? Councillor Presniewski?
Thank you, President Stott. Sabita, just so that everyone knows, and I hope you do, do you know exactly where that poll on Bridge Street is? It's a kind of a big street.
It is right before the senior center.
Okay. Is it replacing another poll, or is it going to be?
It's going to be an inline poll.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So for clarification, it looks like it's at the intersection of Flint and Bridge, in that corner. Any other comments or questions? Councillor Watsonfelt?
Thank you, President Stott. First, I'd like to thank Sabita for being here in person tonight, especially since we just spoke this morning on the phone for the first time. It's a banner day for myself and National Grid. And thanks for the information that you shared earlier today. So my only comment, and I know in the language, it does, you know, National Grid by right installs however they have to install, but just a public statement to National Grid and everybody else, acknowledging that that is a relatively newly paved area, newly designed area, intended for increased safety with pedestrian crossing and people accessing the senior center, which is in the Community Life Center there, and just making sure that when the poll goes in, there's still width and appropriate spacing for anyone with wheels, canes, et cetera, you know, strollers, everything, that they can continue to use that new pathway. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further comments from the council? Councillor Watsonfelt?
Thank you, President Stott. I move that we close the public hearing.
Councillor Watsonfelt moves that the public hearing be closed. All those in favor? All those opposed? Public hearing is closed. Councillor Watsonfelt?
Thank you, President Stott. I move that this be granted.
Councillor Watsonfelt moves that this be granted. Any further discussion? All those in favor that this be granted? All those opposed? License is granted? Or permit is granted? Thanks. Further hearings?
We have an order from National Grid to install one poll on Bridge Street, which is poll number 598.
Thank you. Anyone appearing in favor, please state your name and address for the record.
Sabita Mahaber Sheehy, representing National Grid, 44 River Street, Beverly, Massachusetts. This is across from the existing poll, but is to monitor a different feeder.
Any comments or questions? I'm sorry, for those appearing in favor or in opposition on Zoom, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand. Nope. Any comments or questions from the council? Councillor Watsonfelt? I'm sorry?
Thanks. I'm sorry, I thought I jumped on Councillor Presniewski for a second there. Again, just a couple comments on this one. This one brought up a couple of questions for me because it is opposite side of the street from the other polls. And in addition to what Sabita just said, which is sort of monitoring the feeder of a different feeder location, the location also is required to span the canal, which is why it is on the other side of the street. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for the public's awareness because it does seem to stick out a little bit. Beyond that, I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Councillor Presniewski?
Thank you. I believe you basically answered the question, Councillor Watsonfelt. It was just that the public doesn't get the backup information that we do, so they don't know exactly what the location is for this new poll, so I think it was just addressed. Thank you very much.
Councillor Marcelo?
Thank you, President. I do have questions on this one, and I would like to make sure that we have checked in with engineering on this. That pavement, some of that pavement that's used for the walkway and the bike path is a pervious pavement, and I don't think we want to get a pole stuck in there because that's going to degrade the quality of the pavement, the action that it's there for. So if we could postpone this to get engineering's input on this, I would appreciate that.
Councillor Watsonfelt?
I believe I read in the backup, and I could be wrong about this, that it would be installed in the space currently unfinished between the curb and the actual path that has been created, but I am happy to continue this until the next session, just to get more clarity from the engineering department.
Thank you, yes, I agree. Because it is a bike path, I think that is all new. So our next meeting date is March 23?
Yes, time limit at 7:00 PM, March 23.
Do you have a motion, Councillor Watsonfelt?
My motion is to continue this to our next meeting on the 23rd of March.
Awesome. Councillor Watsonfelt moves to continue the public hearing to our next meeting on March 23. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
We did not close the public hearing yet.
No, we're continuing to March 23. Oh, sorry. Yep. All those in favor of continuing the public hearing till March 23? All those opposed? Matter is continued until our next meeting at March 23. Thank you, Sabita. Appointments and reappointments?
We have the mayor's appointment of Hannah Gathman of 8 Brown Street to serve in the City of Salem's Public Art Commission with a term to expire on March 9, 2024.
Councillor Watsonfelt?
Thank you, President Stott. I move for suspension of the rules.
Councillor Watsonfelt moves for suspension of the rules. Any objection? Rules are suspended?
Thank you. Just that I want to thank Ms. Gathman for their support of the Public Art Commission. I know that there have been recently a few open spots, and it's an incredibly important committee, so I'm really happy to see it filling back up again. With that, unless there are other comments, I would move that this be held under the rules. Right, or is it second?
This is the first.
This is the first.
So you...
Well, don't we have to hold it?
You just suspended the rule.
Oh, I know, but I'm gonna, yeah. I'm gonna do what we usually do, yeah, and I didn't mean to confuse matters, my apologies. Okay, held under the rules. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Watsonfelt, moves that the mayor's appointment of Hannah Gathman to the Public Arts Commission is held under the rules. All those in favor? Matter is held. Further appointments and reappointments? Councillor Presniewski?
We have the mayor's appointment of Kristen Lindberg to serve as the City of Salem's treasurer with a term to expire on January 31, 2025.
Councillor Presniewski?
Thank you. I also ask that this be held under the rules.
Councillor Presniewski moves that the mayor's appointment of Kristen Lindberg be held under the rules. All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter is held. Communications from the mayor.
We have a bond order that the, so the order is that the City Council passed a bond order on July 9, 2020, and approved by the mayor on July 13, 2020, and they would like to amend the CIP of, that was the aggregate amount of $9,638,451 for the 21 CIP, and reprogram that amount of $76,000 from the Electrical Riley Plaza LED lighting to the Smart Signal Project.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Council President. I move for suspension of the rules.
Councillor McLean moves for suspension of the rules. Any objection? Councillor McLean?
Thank you. I was able to communicate with the mayor about this submission. I have not had an opportunity to communicate, however, with the finance director. It seems clear that there are some funds that are remaining from a previous project that they're seeking to use to complete the project because of some cost overruns. However, it's not clear to me exactly what is being shifted around or the nature of the project. I did, however, gain the information that there's a bit of a time crunch on this. I guess our city electrician, Mr. Giardi, has gotten a bid and a quote for this work to be completed that's only good through the end of the month. So I think what I am going to do is I am going to move for adoption for first passage, but I'm going to invite Mr. Giardi, as well as our finance director, to join us at the next meeting so that we can get a little bit more information before our final passage of this. So I do move for adoption for first passage by roll call vote.
Councillor McLean moves for adoption for first passage by roll call vote. Any further discussion? Councillor Marcelo?
Thank you, President. Just to clarify, are you going to send this to the A&amp;F Committee for the discussion?
I am not. I'm going to invite them to join us at the full council and just try to have the conversation and get it passed so that we can maintain the quote because it will potentially run out by the time we send it to committee and then bring it for first passage and then bring it for second passage.
Second passage would be in two weeks, and your A&amp;F Committee would be right before it. I'm just saying.
First passage would be in two weeks, because I would move it to committee, and then it would come out.
No, you just move for adoption for first passage. You can move it to committee and have second passage in two weeks.
Okay, sure. I'll accept that friendly amendment.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So the amendment is for move for, well, the original motion was for move for adoption for first passage tonight by roll call vote, and the friendly amendment is to also send the matter to committee.
Is it going to be co-posted?
Co-post it?
Did you need that?
I don't think that's necessary. Everybody's welcome to attend.
Any further comments or questions? All those in favor for the motion for, okay, all those in favor for the motion, gosh, I'm gonna find my number, authorizing an appropriation of borrowing in the arrogant amount of $9,638,451 to fund the fiscal year 2021 general fund capital improvement program and allocating the authorized amount, various capital projects, is hereby further amendment to replace the project designated fiscal year 21 CIP loan order, Electrical Riley Plaza LED lighting $76,000 with the following project, Electrical Smart Signal Project $76,000, and the fiscal year CIP loan order is otherwise ratified and confirmed in all respects for that for first passage by roll call vote. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes. Councillor Varela?
Yes.
Councillor Presniewski?
Yes.
Councillor Marcelo?
Yes.
Councillor Merkel?
Yes.
Councillor McLean?
Yes.
Councillor Hapworth?
Yes.
Councillor Dominguez?
Yes.
Councillor Cohen?
Yes.
And Councillor Stott?
Yes.
On the bond order first passage, the amount is $76,000 for Electrical to reprogram the Smart Signal Project and refer the matter to A&amp;F. 10 members voting, 10 in the affirmative, none in the negative. Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor?
We have an order that the sum of $26,000 is hereby transferred and appropriated from the receipts reserved funds listed below to the Department of Public Services burial account.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Council President. I move for suspension of the rules.
Councillor McLean moves for suspension of the rules. Any objection? Councillor McLean?
Thank you. I further move for adoption.
Councillor McLean moves for adoption. Under discussion?
So these are funds which are actually generated by the sale of the lots and vaults within our burial locations, and so this is really a procedural matter of allowing them to use the proceeds from their own sales in order to administer those lots.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion for the sum of $26,000 hereby transferred and appropriated from the receipts reserved to the Department of Public Services burial account? All those in favor? All those opposed? Mayor's informational page, none. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Councillor Varela?
Thank you, President Stott. City said on March 9, 2023, an ordinance amending an ordinance relative to sustainable food containers and packaging be ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem as follows. Section 1, Chapter 14, Article 7, 8, sorry, thank you, sustainable food containers and packaging is hereby amended by deleting Section 14-515, effective date in its entirety, and replacing it with the following. Section 14-515, effective date, this article shall take place, affect, September 4, 2023. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter, and I move for adoption for first passage.
Councillor Varela moves for adoption for first passage. Under discussion?
Thank you, President Stott. So this has come up because after a senior meeting with the mayor and his departments, it seems that this has kind of fallen through the cracks. There has yet to be any educational material or dialogue opened up with any of our food service establishments that would be directly impacted by this. Furthermore, the Health Department has also asked for a little more time, three to six months, just to get their ducks in a row so that they can enforce this appropriately. I'd like to mention that, you know, I understand things fall through the cracks. I'm happy to say that the mayor's office, specifically Mr. Sikaranza, will be working on this education material, and we're looking to somewhat get creative in how we approach this. So I look forward to the conversations, and I do feel that a three-month grace period for this ordinance seems reasonable, and I hope that's the will of the body to extend it to September. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councillor Watsonfelt?
Thank you, President Stott. Tough situation we're in, for sure, and I'm in agreement with Councillor Varela's suggestion for the three months. I would want to add, in addition to the communications coming from the mayor's office, you know, in the past, we've had a lot of engagement from the Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Salem Main Streets, in assisting with public campaigns, making sure that everyone is aligned and on board and understands exactly what the requirements are, and I would encourage the city to think about how they engage those two nonprofits specifically. They were really effective during the plastic bag ban. Thank you.
Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, President Stott. So I joined Councillor Varela at a meeting with our health agent and the mayor, and what we kind of talked about is not only having an information sheet, but kind of surveying the affected stores and retailers so that the Health Department would have a better sense of who is not aware or complying. Councillor Varela and I have actually already gone out and started talking to some of the stores that really didn't know about this or are continuing to use polystyrene. It's really a smaller ratio of stores than it would have been maybe five or six years ago, and this will give these stores some time to get through their inventory. One of the things that came up that Councillor Varela educated me on is that unlike plastic bags, when we had that ordinance, it's very difficult to store large quantities of styrofoam. The integrity of the styrofoam isn't as good, takes up a lot of space, so typically, these stores don't have more than a couple of weeks' worth of styrofoam in stock, and I think that with the education initiative, I think we'll be able to get to everyone and make sure that it doesn't adversely affect them financially.
Councillor Dominguez?
Thank you, President Stott. I would like to thank Councillor Varela for this great, and the mayor's office to be so kind and bring that education piece, which is very important. However, I wanted to know if there is any plan to communicate in other languages. We know that the population in Salem is not only one language to speak in, we have many languages. Just keep that in mind, and not only the business owner, we have probably a few business owners that speak other languages, but I think we need to make sure that, we wanted to educate the population as a general, because sometimes we educate the businesses, but when the customer comes to the business, they had an issue. So we want to make sure that everyone understands exactly what is the program is for, so education needs to be complete. So please keep that in mind, and thank you so much for bringing this, and allow the business to make plans ahead of time so they can really, don't be so impacted for a ordinance that's going to be beneficial for all, but at the end of the day, they might be affected financially. So thank you.
Any further comments? I will just make one quick comment from here, that a point was brought up that this will start if this amendment moves forward before the Halloween season, so we want to talk with our businesses that are existing here and also those that might come during the Halloween season, like a large vendor that generally comes and serves food, so we want to make sure that communication is included there as well. Any further comments or questions? On the motion for adoption for first passage to amend the Chapter 14, Article 8, to change the effective date to September 4, 2023, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Any further late files, motions, orders, resolutions? Councillor Presniewski?
Thank you, President Stott. Order that the Committee of the Whole meet with the City Council, Rules and Orders, Section 26(c) relative to the new public testimony ruling that was brought to us earlier today that we meet for that reason before the next meeting. Thank you, and I move for adoption.
Thank you. Councillor Presniewski moves that the Committee of the Whole meet to discuss Chapter 26(a) Rules and Orders of the City Council. This is late file, will go right to committee. All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Committee reports. Councillor Marcelo?
Thank you, President. City of Salem and City Council, March 9, 2023, Committee of Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, to whom was referred the matter of granting of certain licenses, tag day Salem Little League, May 13, June 3, and June 17, 2023, has considered said matter and would recommend that it be granted.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Report is accepted. On adoption of the recommendation, any discussion? Don't discussion. On adoption of the recommendation, that the following tag days be granted? All those in favor? All those opposed? Happy selling. Okay. Further committee reports. Councillor Marcelo?
Thank you, President. City of Salem and City Council, March 9, 2023, Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, to whom was referred the matter of ordinance to amend an ordinance and map relative to zoning 67 Derby Street, has considered said matter and would recommend, hold on, I have to get the wording right. That it be referred back to the committee with a positive recommendation for second passage by roll call vote.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? Report is accepted. On adoption of the recommendation, Councillor Marcelo?
Thank you, President. So again, this is the second passage on the zoning of those small lots on Derby Street to industrial from R2, and we had put this into committee at the last meeting because there were a couple of councillors absent at that point, and we wanted to make sure that everyone was on record for the second vote for zoning.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councillor McLean?
Thank you. I'm just confused about what the recommendation is. Did the committee recommend that it be referred back to the full council for second passage, or is it staying in?
No, it was referred back to the full council
Okay.
with a positive recommendation for second passage by roll call vote.
Great, thank you.
Any further discussion? On the motion to, well, it's back in council, for second and final passage by roll call vote, City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councillor Watsonfelt?
Yes.
Councillor Varela?
Yes.
Councillor Presniewski?
Yes.
Councillor Marcelo?
Yes.
Councillor Merkel?
Yes.
Councillor McLean?
Yes.
Councillor Hapworth?
Yes.
Councillor Dominguez?
Yes.
Councillor Cohen?
Yes.
And Councillor Stott?
Yes. Thank you. On the second passage of the zoning ordinance and map amendment to rezone a parcel at 67 Derby Street, 10 members voting, 10 in the affirmative, matter carries. Further committee reports? Councillor Hapworth?
Thank you, President Stott. City of Salem, in City Council, March 9, 2023, the Community Economic Development co-posted with the Committee of the Whole to is referred the matter of Haunted Happenings 2022 debriefing conversation with the goal of hearing data on visitors, revenues, and expenses, as well as collecting feedback from organizers, programmers, and operation personnel of the 2022 Halloween season, has considered said matter and recommended the matter remain in committee.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? Report is accepted. On adoption of the recommendation, under discussion? Councillor Hapworth?
Thank you, President Stott. We had a great committee meeting. It was held at the Community Life Center, which is a first, at least, I think, for the members of this body. I think what came out of the meeting, I think, at least from my perspective, was it's important to separate things into what's controllable and what's not controllable. The things that we don't control are things like Halloween happening and the amount of people that want to come to Salem and what they'd like to do in Salem. The things that we do control are things along the lines of how do we market, how do we communicate to those visitors, how do we plan for those visitors, how do we coordinate events and programming, and I think we had a great conversation around that second portion of the controllables that we have. I think there was certainly, you know, an understanding from the businesses and from the... the, from some of the organizers that, you know, there, there are things that we could be doing differently, there are things that, that, that we're doing well. I think there was, one of the things that came out was, at least from, from the counselors' present, was a desire to have a more formalized operation, understanding that things are running well right now and we're doing a great job with people who are very, very experienced, but that at some point, an event that draws, that draws potentially a million people in a month could look at having some sort of a more formalized structure in how we organize and plan for that. I think just in general, this is a good, a good place to have these conversations in public, in front of the City Council. I hope we continue to do that, this is, if we continue to grow as a Halloween destination, even if we continue to maintain what we have right now, this is something that we should have, we should have full public oversight over. And we also saw some, some numbers, I mean, it's, it's very difficult to quantify what we spend on Halloween versus what comes in, but with the numbers that were presented to us, which didn't include a lot of, certainly a lot of numbers in there, but the, what, what was brought to us is that those numbers are getting very, very close as to, in terms of what we spend and what we take in. So I think those are just, those are just important conversations for us to continue to have.
Any further discussion? I would just like to say thank you for holding that monster of a meeting, a lot of people. On adoption of those recommendation for the matter to stay in committee, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter remains in committee. Further committee reports, Counselor Varela?
Thank you, President Stott. City of Salem and City Council, March 9, 2023, the Committee on Public Health, Safety, Environment co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred to the matter of noise pollution, particularly car stereo and motorcycle noise, and any potential actions that may be able to be taken to help mitigate this issue in Salem, has considered said matter and would recommend the matter remain in committee.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Report is accepted. On adoption of the recommendation, under discussion, Counselor Varela?
Thank you, President Stott. So, we had a very thoughtful conversation, thank you, Counselor Watsonfeld, for bringing this in. We do have quite a few residents that are affected by the quality of life when it, when it pertains to noise. I find that Salem is a very unique place to live, and with our downtown vibrance, I can see where we have some issues, especially the downtown area of our city. What really came down, we had to the conversation, is what can we and what can we not do? At this point, we know that we're very constrained by Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 90, Section 14 or Section 16, about basically an officer has to be on-site to give a citation, and that's current, that's just what happens with general laws. So, how we can get creative, we did have a discussion about what's happened about 11 years ago, which was a home rule petition to put in red light cameras. At this time, it seems like there's will for the body to do this, and within that, we are talking with our city solicitor about a home rule petition to do this, and we'll see if we have some will this time. I know it's going to take a lot of work, as Counselor Marcelo said, as far as advocating for a measure like this, but I believe it's, it's something we need to do as a city for the quality of our residents. Furthermore, I have reached out to Ruben Peckham of the Intelligent Instruments, the ones basically that have the devices and cameras that are being utilized, they're out of Southampton, UK, and right now, I'm just doing my due diligence as far as talking about, you know, all of the hurdles, all the constraints, and what happens when you're implementing a system like this. So, in the time being, we're starting this conversation, but the biggest component is going to be that home rule petition. So with that, thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Watsonfeld?
Thank you, President Stott, and thank you to Counselor Varela for hosting that meeting and for doing all of the research in advance that he did, so that we could have not only a really robust, transparent public engagement conversation, which was what the initial ask was, but also so that we could kind of get a temperature check from the enforcers that were present on exactly some of these creative ideas, so we could really distinguish what our next steps might be. I'm looking forward to continuing to work on that with Counselor Varela and the city solicitor, and have high hopes again for, for hopefully this year, having more support at the state. I just, again, once, you've heard me say it before, but I would be remiss not to, just thank you to the residents that brought this forward originally, who are the ones who are suffering from, from this, this ongoing noise. I will say, you know, thanks to Counselor Varela for, for specifying the intensity of the experience in downtown, but I think it was really good to talk through with other neighbors and with the council present, the council members present, that this really is a major corridor issue citywide, and anywhere you have a Lafayette, a Loring, a Highland Ave, you know, anywhere coming in and out where it's a big thoroughfare, you have this, and we have it on 1A and Bridge Street too, so it's not, it's not just specific to the heart of the B5. It's a, it's a problem, it's a problem all around, and everyone seems to agree, so hopefully we have an action plan for moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Marcelo?
Thank you, President. I just want to add on a little bit to the history, two years ago, we also put in a home rule petition for speed cameras in school zones, and the legislature had a specific bill for red light cameras. Neither of them went anywhere, so I think writing another home rule petition that's just more generic on automated enforcement of traffic that will cover not only speeding but red light cameras and noise, and possibly getting some amendments to Rep. Cruz's bill that he has in, which I believe is just on speeding and red light cameras, and maybe we can work things through that way, but he has suggested that we put it in and then individually and get constituents to call the State House and, and voice their support for automated enforcement. Thank you.
Counselor Watsonfeld?
Thank you, President Stott. On that exact point, there's already been some discussion with legal and with Counselor Varela as well, about submitting a, the HRP for authorization, just clarifying for the public's awareness that what the, the home rule petition would do would authorize us as a city, as a municipality, to then go on and create local ordinances, and we can take each matter separately if we want to, right, and one at a time, so that we can discuss it in the public, get a lot of public engagement, but that, like, I think to Counselor Marcelo's point, it's, it's a good idea to kind of just authorize us to make those decisions. Counselor Varela said it, this is a unique town, this is a unique experience, the people that come through here and visit here, you know, I, I hate some of them, most of them are wonderful, right, but I think ultimately the bottom line is they have no commitment to be good neighbors to us, because they don't live here, and so that's part of what this unique experience is all about. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? On Counselor Varela's motion to keep the matter of noise pollution in committee, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter remains in committee. Communications from city officials? None. Petitions?
We have a request from BNS Fitness to hold a road race, the Black Cat 10 and 20 miler in use of city streets on March 26, 2023.
Counselor Proznyuski?
Thank you, President Stott, I move that this request be granted.
Counselor Proznyuski moves that this be granted, under discussion?
Thank you. This is one of the bigger ones that Salem runs. It's a, it's run by BNS Fitness, who have a history of running great events in the city, they do a first-class job, there's no doubt about it. This also gets people prepared, people in this area prepared for the Boston Marathon. It takes up, it's done on a Sunday morning, and it, it goes from Salem to Marblehead, once for the 10 milers and twice, twice for the 20 milers, so there is, this one's fairly lengthy, but having, having done this before, they, like I say, they do a top-notch job of, of conducting the race, and I, again, would like to see it held again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the council? On the request from BNS Fitness to hold a road race in use of city streets on March 26, all those in favor? All those opposed? Petition is granted? Further petitions?
We have a list of license applications for public guys, taxi operators, and taxi cab limos.
Counselor Marcelo?
Thank you, President, I move that these be granted.
Counselor Marcelo moves that these be granted, any discussion?
No discussion.
On Counselor Marcelo's motion to grant the public guy taxi operators and taxi cab limo licenses, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries? Further petitions?
We have one subrogated claim.
Counselor Marcelo?
Thank you, President, I move this be referred to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Counselor Marcelo moves that this subrogated claim moves to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, any discussion?
Just one question through you to the city clerk, what does that mean?
So, it was from the person's insurance company that's sending us to get reimbursed for what they paid out for that loss of, for their customer.
So it's the insurance company that's asking for?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, it's something they kind of get their...
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? On the subrogated claim to move to the Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, all those in favor? Any opposition? Matter is referred to Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. Further petitions?
We have a listed drain layer contract operator license.
Counselor Marcelo?
Thank you, President, I move that these be granted.
Counselor Marcelo moves that these be granted, any discussion?
No discussion.
On the following drain layer contract licenses be granted, all those in favor? All those opposed? Licenses are granted. Unfinished business. Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, President Stott. March 9, year 2023, be ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem as follows, Section 1, Chapter 42, Section 50B handicap zone limited time is hereby amended by adding the following, Ocean Ave in front of 69 Ocean Ave for a distance of 20 feet, handicap parking limited zone, tow zone. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by city charter, I move that this is adopted second passage.
Counselor Cohen moves for adoption for second passage, any discussion?
No.
All those in favor for adoption for second passage? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further unfinished business, Counselor Proznyuski?
In the year 2023, an ordinance relative to traffic being ordained by the City Council of the City of Salem as follows, Section 1, Section 51 of Article 5, be amended by inserting the following, Lafayette Street, parking prohibited on certain streets east of Leeside from the intersection with Palmer Street extending southward for 45 feet. This ordinance shall take effect as provided by city council, and I move for adoption for second passage.
Counselor Proznyuski moves for adoption for second passage, any discussion?
No discussion.
All those in favor of adoption for second passage? All those opposed? Matter carries? Anything further? Counselor Dominguez?
I would like to take this opportunity to say Happy International Women's Day. We celebrated yesterday, and I think we have to recognize the good persons that we have in City Council, but we also recognize all the women in the world, especially in Salem. I happen to appreciate and love being born from a mother who I love much, so thank you so much, and I really, really appreciate you, and we all recognize you to a day like yesterday, so Happy International Women's Day to all of you. With that being said, if anybody doesn't have anything else, I would like to say I move for adjournment.
Counselor Dominguez moves for adjournment, all those in favor? We are adjourned at 7:50.